All right, it is the time appointed for the meeting. Let's stand and have an implication in the pledge. Father, we come to you this day, Lord, asking you for wisdom. We, Lord, need your direction. We need your guidance. We ask, Father, that you would simply show us what your perfect will is, that we would truly be representatives of the people, that we would, Father, make decisions that display your wisdom, and, Father, that would glorify you and your kingdom. And we ask it all, in the name of Jesus, as we particularly remember our fellow Councilman, Councilman Reader, this evening, and just ask your healing hand be upon him. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight. We have a class from Newberry College or some of the members of the class here, so we're so excited to have you all with us this evening. And if you have any questions, somebody will be glad to help you with those at the end of the meeting tonight. But thank you all for being here and seeing what local, how local government runs. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none is, go ahead.
None.
None. Would you like to make the motion to adopt the agenda?
Make the motion to adopt the agenda as is.
All right, there's a motion, there's a second by Mr. Livingston. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by a show of hands. Opposed likewise. Carries unanimously. Item number two on our agenda is ordinance number four dash six dash twenty twenty-two, which is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the county of Newberry, adopted June sixteen, twenty sixteen, so as to amend the zoning map, acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established and codified in chapter one fifty-three of the county Newberry Code of Ordinances as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling nineteen and seventy-two hundred acres designated as TMS parcel six five three dash six one from RS single-family residential to R two rural. Are there any changes on this since last time? Where is Katie O'Shea? They, oh, no changes on this? This is scheduled to be our second reading. Is there a motion of counsel toward second reading?
No.
By Mr. Livingston, this be second reading? Is there a second, second by Mr. Hip, that this be second reading? Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by a show of hands. Opposed likewise. The motion carries unanimously. Item number three on our agenda is ordinance number oh four oh nine two zero two-two, an ordinance establishing minimum rules and regulations to regulate the disposal of garbage, refuge, and other trash in Newberry County, and providing penalties for violation of this ordinance. This is our first reading. Mr. Iglesias?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, counsel. This was presented to finance committee a few weeks ago, and there are some ordinances on the books that are being replaced by this, and it deals with the dislocation.
Oh, thank you.
It is addressing solid waste management, particularly at the transfer station, and it makes clear that tipping fees are applicable for all commercial waste. And it also provides for enforcement and fines for violations.
You've seen the ordinance in your packet, had a chance to review and heard the explanation. This is scheduled as our first reading. Is there a motion of counsel?
I will make a motion for first reading. We had a discussion and I had some comments.
Yes, sir.
And the, the minutes, I mean, the agenda that I received from you initially had the initial version. And I think I recall, did you send out a follow-up or not?
We're working on those amendments. Yes, sir. There were some good comments about clarifying.
There were some things that needed to be clarified, some changes.
They weren't ready in time for today, but we absolutely will have them ready for second reading. Yes, sir.
Okay. With that being said, I'll, I'll go along with first reading.
Okay.
Understanding that there will be some changes.
Motion by Mr. Hip for first reading. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Airwood. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by a show of hands. Opposed likewise.
I'm not voting until I see the changes made.
Okay. Mr. Livingston is in opposition. The motion carries five to one. Item number four on our agenda, ordinance number four dash seven dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance to provide appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-two, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three, for the Newberry County budget for county ordinary purposes and for other county purposes for which the county may level on, excuse me, may levy a taxes on all taxable and personal real estate, real property in Newberry County for all county purposes, including sufficient tax to pay the principal and interest on outstanding indebtedness of Newberry County payable during the said fiscal year, to provide for matters related to said taxes and other revenues received by the county during the fiscal year, and to provide for borrowing and anticipation of tax collections by the issuance of a one or more tax anticipation note, if necessary. We have spent a couple hours and about an hour and a half or so in a budget, over the budget. This is our first reading. Anything you want to add to what we've already gone through?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion that this be first reading, understanding we have a number of work sessions and two more readings to go? Motion by Mr. Hip. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Shealy. Is there a discussion?
I would just say that I will not be voting for this budget the way it currently is designed because there's about three hundred thousand dollars under the administrator's budget that's increasing considerably. There's a shell game with moving positions that were in place that have been moved, monies to other positions, and we may not be looking at a significant budget increase, but we will be looking at recurring expenses as time evolves to replace the positions that we're talking about cutting.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by a show of hands. Two, three?
This is just first reading.
This is just first reading. That is correct. All opposed? Three. So the motion fails.
Which is, puts us in an interesting position.
Now, our timeline gets very difficult.
Because if the ordinance fails first reading, then we are in a position where I would like our attorney to discuss with us where we are when an ordinance fails first reading.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hip, if it fails at first reading, there's essentially no need to have a second reading.
But we have to have a budget, so how do we get it back on the agenda?
That's something for, I suppose, counsel to resolve. You, it's on a tight schedule as it is because in theory, the budget should be complete prior to the end of the fiscal year, which is June thirtieth, and there's at least one requirement for a public hearing, which has to be scheduled sometime now. So someone, either at this meeting could move to reconsider, or at the next meeting could move, the next regular council meeting could move to reconsider. And if it passes, then you can, you can put it back where you have first reading.
All right, for the simplicity of the game, I will, I will rescind my vote and go with it, but it will, I will not vote for another second reading if there are not changes made.
Under Robert's rules, can we do that?
I think a person who is...
Technically, you can't, Mr. Chairman, but in a loose affiliation, I mean, technically, you've already declared the vote.
Right.
So you've got to undo the vote, but if counsel is willing and Mr. Livingston wants to redact his vote or pull it back, I suppose, to simplify it, rather than going through a motion to reconsider and then voting on that and then hope, if that passes, then you put the motion back there. I would say you can call it and say, technically, this is not Robert's, but you could call it and say, well, we now have four to three in favor.
Okay.
Unless you want to go through the whole process.
I, I like clean. So let's do a motion to reconsider and then I, I, I just like clean. If somebody comes behind us to check, I like to do it right. So would there be a motion to reconsider this matter for first reading? Motion by Mr. Livingston, second by Mr. Shealy. Is there a discussion? All in favor by a show of hands. So we have a unanimous motion to reconsider the first reading.
Now you would start again with a motion.
Now it's a motion for first reading. Motion by Mr. Hip, second by Mr. Shealy for a first reading. Is there other discussion?
Just under discussion, I will not support second reading unless some of the changes we have discussed.
And, Mr. Chairman, the budget before you is the administrator's recommended budget. Any changes will have to be done by motion and approval of counsel.
Which is what our work sessions are for.
Well, except, Mr. Chairman, just so you understand, you, you can't really, the, the, the working theory is when you have a work session, that's to discuss it, and if you want to make the change, you'd make it in the council meeting.
Yes, we, we would guide the administration into making the changes that we would like to see for the next reading.
Well...
I'm not sure how you can do that without action of counsel.
You've got to have action by counsel. So what would happen is, it's, it's been, suggestions have been made. And so when we get to second reading, if counsel wants those changes made, you can have a motion for second reading, and someone can second it, and then somebody makes a motion to amend as presented.
Gotcha. Yeah, we're saying the same thing, just different terminology.
You, you can't do it in a work session. You have to do it in a council meeting. Yes, sir.
But we can, but the work session is to, to determine how that works, what, what would change, those kind of things.
Yes, sir, but it comes from counsel at this point.
Correct. We're, we're agreeance in what we're saying. We're just doing it a different way. As my good friend Columbus Stevens used to say, we say the same thing. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
I too have, you know, reservations about some of the changes that we wanted. There's not that many, but they're significant to me.
Hearing that, is there a motion that we get first reading in so, and then we can go to the budget work session? I'm sorry, the motion's been made, all in favor of this being first reading. All right. All opposed? It now carries six, nothing impacts us. Item number five is ordinance number zero four zero eight twenty twenty-two, an ordinance to provide appropriations for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-two, and ending July thirty, twenty twenty-three, for Newberry County Library, Piedmont Technical College, and the Newberry Agency for Disabilities and Special Needs to provide for the levy of taxes on all taxable personal and real estate properties in Newberry County for said purposes, to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues received by the county during said fiscal year for said purposes. This is scheduled as our first reading. Is there a motion that this be first reading?
No.
Motion by Mr. Livingston, second by Mr. Hip. Is there a discussion? All in favor by a show of hands. Opposed likewise. The motion carries unanimously. Item number six on our agenda is counsel to consider the purchase of a brush truck for the fire department. Mr. Tommy Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had put out for bid for a brush truck slash service truck type vehicle. We received one bid, which was pretty much way over budget. We can blame a lot of that on the pandemic, I guess, but this was the first time I've actually bid out a brush service truck type vehicle. It came in at a hundred and fifty-six thousand, a little over a hundred fifty-six thousand. I had budgeted in the lease purchase in a hundred thousand for this vehicle. Met with finance and Mr. Iglesias, and we looked through some of our budget items and other areas of our budget, and we found where we could fund this purchase. And I think y'all have got a copy of this in your packet. We had some roof repairs that came way under budget that we were able to utilize some of that funding, and we had a ten thousand dollar grant match we was able to utilize because we didn't have a grant this current budget year, and then remaining one thousand six hundred thirty-seven would come from one-time capital contingency. So I'm here tonight to ask y'all to approve me to move forward with that purchase, if at all possible. And this, this will be going to Whitmire Fire Department, which we've been out, without a brush truck for probably close to three years because we had to turn in the forestry truck they had just because it was in bad repair.
I, I would just say, going into that, I commend you and counsel and staff for going in and finding those resources in the budget. Nobody could have seen numbers like we're seeing right now, so I, I just appreciate that.
It absolutely went crazy on cost, probably an average increase of forty to fifty thousand dollars on a fire engine right now versus the last one I bought, so.
And just so you know, as a procedural matter, if you approve it tonight, it will require an ordinance to reallocate those bond funds, so with your approval tonight, we'll start that process and we'll kind of contemporaneously work towards the PO for the, for the purchase.
Okay.
All right, shot in the dark, American Rescue Funds cannot be used in any of this, correct?
Okay, they're, they're shifting their funds. We're giving you permission to shift your funds, and then you're asking for one thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars is all.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if we could keep from using our monies and use the American Rescue Fund monies, I would...
Yes, these are funds sitting in a bond account that have the larger, the biggest, the biggest dollar amount comes from unspent bond money that's sitting, and it was already utilized for the purpose it was intended for, and so it's just an unspent amount, so this would be a good use of them as far as.
Perfect. Okay, no problem.
I make a motion that we accept.
Okay, motion that we accept this bid, second by Mr. Shealy and Mr. Livingston. Is there a discussion? All in favor by a show of hands. Opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you.
Item number seven on the agenda is the counsel to authorize county administrator and human resources director to extend an offer for the position of clerk to counsel. We had some more interviews, and so we just need a vote of counsel to offer that to the, to the person we had indicated to them to speak with. Have you had an opportunity to speak with that person?
Yes, sir. This is just a technical matter coming out of executive session, just retroactively approving me. That offer's been made and accepted.
Okay, so the person that we spoke about in our last executive session, is there a motion that we approve them to make that offer? A motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Ms. Airwood. Is there a discussion? All in favor by a show of hands. Opposed likewise. That motion carries unanimously as well. Item number eight on our agenda is an executive session under code section thirty dash four dash seventy, subsection A of the Code of Laws of South Carolina as amended nineteen seventy-six for the discussion or negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements and proposed sale or purchase of property, the receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to pending, threatened, or potential claim, or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or the position of the public agency in other adversarial situations, including the assertion against the agency of a claim. Is there a motion that we go into executive session? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Livingston. Is there a discussion? All in favor by a show of hands. Opposed likewise. It is unanimous that we'll move into executive session. Do we need to stay here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so unfortunately, we have to ask you all to step out. We try to go to the other room when we can, but sometimes because of the way contractors and other people come in, we have to use our video system to speak with them. Our commitment will be to you to get you back as quickly as possible. Our commitment will be to you to get you back as quickly as possible.
Oh, thank you so much. You had ESPN.
No, that's, that's.
That's ESP.
ESP.
Gonsalief Hunter used to say ESPN.
Yes, he did.
That's where I said that. That was where I got that. For those of you who remember Gonsalief. My second favorite line of his, my favorite line of his was, how can you beat on a woman and then eat her cooking? There's some pretty sage advice in that. Is there a motion that we come out of executive session? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Ms. Airwood. Is there a discussion? All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. We are out of executive session. Newberry County Council met in executive session for the aforementioned reasons with no action taken. Item number nine on our agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. You see those items that are listed there as items A, B, C, D, and E. County council minutes from three meetings, the central alliance invoice, and the committee report from the economic development. Is there a motion that we adopt the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Shealy. Second by Reverend Curry. Is there a discussion? All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. Appointments. Does any member of council have appointments?
Yes, sir. I'd like to appoint Bert Lucas for the Board of Rural Fire Control, taking place of Dwight McDuffie, who's stepping down for health issues.
Motion by Mr. Shealy to appoint Bert Lucas to the Board of Rural Fire Control is their second. Second by Ms. Airwood. I think she was up first. Any discussion? All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. Carries unanimously. Do you have more, sir?
I think that's all.
That's all. Any other appointments?
All right.
Hearing none, public comments. There is no one signed up for public comments. Is there anyone here who would like to make public comments? Yes, sir. Come up to the podium, please. So all the fine folks in the internet world can hear your eloquence.
Yeah. My name is Dennis Lambrees and I'm a faculty member at Newberry College and teach state and local government courses and other political science courses. And we just thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and have our students observe government at work. And we try to talk about some of the intricacies of it, but it's always better when they see it live than just read it out of the book. So we appreciate the opportunity. We've been able to work with you in the past and look forward to opportunities to work with you in the future to expose my students and the students at Newberry College to the world of state and local government and the important role it plays in everybody's life. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. I understood from my conversation, you were former chair of Saluda County Council.
Correct.
So you have sat on the other side of this.
Yeah, I've been on both sides of the bench. Absolutely. So I know where you come from and it's not as easy as it looks.
No, sir. No, sir.
But again, thank you. Thanks again.
Appreciate y'all being here again. If you have any questions, if you want to talk to one of us afterwards, feel free to grab one of us. Otherwise, I know you got to get back for important college activities. Comments or requests from the county administrator?
None, sir.
Comments or requests from council members? Reverend Curry?
I don't know, sir.
Ms. Airwood? Mr. Livingston?
Just like to say, please keep Roland Kibler in your prayers. He is not doing well, I understand. And if anybody, some of you have been around forever know who I'm talking about, but it's Ms. Josephine Kibler. She used to be clerk to council back under the Ed Lamanek years, et cetera. And I don't know up through what years, but anyway, Mr. Roland's not doing well at all. So if y'all could just please keep him in your, in your thoughts and prayers.
Absolutely. Great man and what a wonderful woman. Mr. Shealy? Mr. Hip?
To follow up with what Mr. Lambrees had to say. I had the opportunity to speak to the CPST Commission recently about a joint city and county CPST project. And I was at the podium and they were sitting over here. And I just want everybody to know, it's a lot easier to sit over here than it is to stand over there and make a presentation.
You might take exception.
Yeah. I'm just telling you. Anyway.
Anything else, sir?
That's all.
All right. We do, we remember our brother and our comrade, Mr. Reader. If he's been able to tune in tonight, we certainly want to continue to pray for a speedy recovery for him. Appreciate all the efforts of everybody and all the efforts of staff and our budget. Future meetings, we have an executive committee meeting on April 25th at 6:00 PM. The much-alluded to budget work session on April 26th at 6:00 PM. We have our next county council meeting, which would be on 5/4 at 6:00 PM. Another budget work session for May the 10th, and then a county council meeting on May 18. Having said that, is there a motion that we adjourn? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Hip. All in favor by show of hands. It carries unanimously. We stand adjourned.